Alrighty then. We will call this April ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Deputy Mayor Anzalotti, here. Councilmember Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Best. He's here.
Here.
Councilmember Tudor.
Here.
Mayor Carrington.
Here.
Councilmember Moline.
Here.
Councilmember Alcantra.
Here.
Alright, if everyone could stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask Charlie and Marcus to lead us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Next, we have the approval of the agenda with minutes from March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. What's the wishes of the council for the approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Is there any comment or any objection to that? We'll declare that a unanimous approve. Next, we'd scheduled Palmer Museum of History and Art to do a report about Mary Geo Parks. Has experienced family deaths, so we are gonna probably bring her back in May. So, well wishes go out to her. City manager's report.
Good evening. Report, the auditors are here in the building, occupying this space, dominating this place. We expect a good report, as well as you do. On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at Palmer Fred Meyer with our police department and Mats Huber's Mary Miller, there is a drug take-back. This is something that's been done probably for seven, eight years now. So, go through your medicine cabinets, stuff you don't use, bring it down, we'll dispose of it properly and keep it out of the hands where they should not be. Also, too, on May fourth and fifth, back at the fairgrounds in the Palmer Municipal Airport is the Great Alaska Aviation Gathering. It's a, it's a pretty big deal, we're adding, we're adding quite a bit. In fact, there is a Saturday night at the airport concert, right there at the airport, kind of celebrating this event. I believe the mayor is even going to be doing a proclamation regarding them in the future. Also, too, very important, as we go through town, it's not as, Palmer's not as pretty as it should be. So, on May sixth through eleventh, it's Community Cleanup Week. And then Saturday is our big event. We'll have food, hot dogs, bike giveaways, prizes. And also, too, not City of Palmer, but at the Pavilion, they do the Blessing of the Bikes, which is a nice corresponding event. Also, too, at the Chamber tomorrow, the rodeo buck riding, bull riding is gonna make a presentation at Chamber. They are planning on coming back at the end of May to the fairgrounds. And this past week is able to participate in some of the days, or some, a day, at the Alaska Infrastructure Symposium. And so, something that the workforce, Alaska Plan is dealing with, is there's going to be, they expect in, in the next six years, there's gonna be twenty billion dollars in revenue coming to state and resource broadband energy type projects. But we are gonna be about twenty thousand, twenty, it's twenty thousand two with four zeros, new workers to fill those new jobs. So, that is quite a bit of need. And, and I'm part of this, big part of this, but Alaska's working age population is shrinking and aging. So, that's kind of a challenge. Hopefully, this investment will keep our kids here in the state. But that's gonna be a big challenge for the state of, state of Alaska. Also, too, there's much money coming for infrastructure that will benefit us as far as road construction. As you know, Phase Two of the Glen Highway is gonna inconvenience all greatly this summer, but it'll be better in the long run. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, I might add a comment that I have that, since you have, I think you're Acting Public Works Director in the audience, that if we can get trashcans out in April, then, you know, faithful citizens can help pick up things, you know, as they're walking around town.
He is listening.
Is there anyone else with questions from the council for the manager in his report? Okay, next is my mayor's report. In my written report, I, I'd, I'd heard some rumblings from, well, from the internet and social media, et cetera, about the library project. And I was trying to just give a little perspective that we're about a little over a year into this project. It's probably a three-year project. And so, it was just over a year ago, we asked the manager to do an RFP, to seek out an architect. And so, they did, they, I forget how many, did you have, like five respond to the, to the RFP? And then they actually went onsite to visit the top three. And then they came back, and last June is when we awarded the contract to Wolf. And then we started working with them, and there was kind of an, an ad hoc group put together with the manager, the community development director, the library director, and myself, to work with Gary Wolf and his architects. And one of the things that came out of that is, originally Gary was saying, we should have a twenty-four thousand square foot library. That library group kind of whittled them down to twenty thousand. So, we're kind of been whittled down a little bit already on that. Also, in that June meeting, we had the bond attorney explain things. And with the GL bond, if, if we do the bonding that was said, she was explaining that, 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 that bond is a serious thing, and the city has to put forth all of its general funds, which two-thirds of our general fund is sales tax. And so, you know, we're required and expected to pay with whatever money we have, which includes sales tax money, which is where that kind of comes from. I know a few people were concerned about that. And then there's various reports, I put links in my reports, so people can go look at the report that Gary put together of what public, you know, what, what, the different ways they addressed the public, and then presented his final report for Phase One in January. And I just, I just wanted to kind of bring in that perspective of that's kind of a, a quick summary of what's been happening from the council point of view with our public meetings, which has come before council. And... I had something else for my mayor's report. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Best.
Do you mind if we, we have a little dialogue on that, on that, the report aspect of what you're, you were talking about with the bond issue and how the...
If you've got questions for me? You have questions on my report?
It, it's, you had said that the bond would be paid back by the overall amount that is taxed and property taxes. But I'd like to stipulate that if there was a failure for us to pay on that bond, the obligation goes, goes back to the property owners themselves. Everybody wants to say that, you know, the, the folks that are outside of city limits, that it's the, the, the sales tax that is gonna be paying for this library. And yes, it will go that way, but the obligation to pay back that bond falls on the shoulders of the property owners, not necessarily the tax, those that are purchasing items within our city limits, but it go, it would be beholden to the property owners. And I just wanna stipate, you know, make that clear. Because that, that's where some of the consternation comes as to those that are voicing their opinion on what the City of Palmer should have as a library, that it's all gonna be paid for by sales tax. But the obligation to pay back goes to the property owners.
Okay.
Thank you.
And for further context, a quote that's right out of my mayor's report from the bond attorney, that says, "What means is that you, you're going to use all available funds that you have in your general fund to pay the debt service, the principal and interest on those bonds." And yes, that would include property tax. Does Attorney have a question for me? No. Councilman Alcantra.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Best, but the old quote is, I'd rather light a candle than curse the darkness. Those are some draconian-type things that would have to happen for it to all fall back on property taxpayers. I think the number, and I could be wrong, I'm kind of looking for Gina for a lifeline, but I'll look at the city manager. I think the number for sales tax in our budget that pays for our police, that pays for water, that pays for our city manager, that pays for the things that we do, I think sales tax pays more, like eighty-five percent of our funding, it's, it's well above two-thirds. And so, so I look at that, and I'd say, it would have to be catastrophic-type events before we flip to getting most of our things paid for by those of us who live in the Palmer city limits. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. So, so much for questions on my report. So, a couple other things I want, want to remind council of is, we're looking at April thirtieth, three P M, to do a second round of interviews with the city manager. And if, there's a deadline of April sixteenth. If you've got any questions, et cetera, for the H R manager with Title Four personnel, you need to get those to her by the sixteenth. We talked about doing that. So, is there any questions about my report? Alright. Uh, yes, sir.
On the letter about Senior Center?
Oh. Sure, you want, I, it's, it's in there. The Senior Center contacted me, they have five acres behind their existing building, and they are looking to get funds to help do, build some senior housing back behind there. And they asked for a lot of support, so I put that letter together, and unless you guys object, I was planning to send it out.
Thank you.
Alright. So, do you have any questions, next is the city clerk? Does anyone have any questions for the city clerk? Okay, city attorney?
I'll be brief.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to highlight the council that in the last couple of weeks, there was a new U.S. Supreme Court ruling that created a new test for what's considered state action for elected officials on their personal Facebooks and their personal Facebook usages. So, I'm gonna dig into that, and then I'll give you guys an update next meeting regarding, you know, some do's and don'ts, and, and just so you are aware of the significance of that. I also wanted to highlight that I have been digging into the researching and the last tasks regarding Chickaloon's potential expansion of police powers, jurisdictions, boundaries, and some of those details. And I will keep you updated on that progress.
Okay. Any questions from the council for the attorney? Next, we have audience participation. Council meeting rules protect your right to testify and be heard, even if others in the room disagree with you. Council meeting rules also ensure that those attending can express their views if they do not interfere with the rights of others to see and hear the proceedings. At all times, order and decorum will be maintained in keeping with the civility and dignity of the legislative process. So, we go for three minutes per person, and we have a sign-up list. Alright. Well, open audience participation, looks like Allison Collins is first. Please start with your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Allison Collins. I live here at Palmer City Limits. I grew up here at Palmer. I'm a person in support of really the largest library possible. Understandable, it's right to do, but original design was a point in the 1000th year source of a library. And since I was supportive of that, I grew up here at Palmer, using the library regularly. And it provided me with, there's a lot of value in having that available. So, I left for school, came back, started my own family here, we used the library. If we got, I went at least once a week, often more. And I participated in the different programs I had for children, checked out books. Also, some of the first introduction for my children into respecting shared property and learning what it means to be part of a community. We, I encouraged service in the community through, through shelf books, the write cards for people on wheels, et cetera. So, it was just a real, in here at Palmer, where there's often a lot of things for the children, the library is extremely valuable for families and individuals. The only complaint I've had over the years is lack of space. We go to lots of the, the lapsit for toddlers and, and kids to go over, the summer reading programs, and, and even just finding an actual table and chair to sit at and looking at books. And the years before the collapse, it became difficult. So, in my personal experience with the library, I think that twenty thousand square feet is gonna be full as soon as it's built. And I just think it would be such a shame to put so much money and resources, effort, into building a library only to be run out of it, you know, practically by time's up. So, like I said, I just like to encourage you all to support of the larger library. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Collins? Pull that microphone close to you. There you go.
My name is Marcus Collins. I live in Palmer, and I use the library often. I'm supportive of a larger library because I read a lot of books here, and I think it's helpful for our community.
Thank you. Mary Robinson?
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. My name is Mary Robinson, I'm a City of Wasilla resident. I am a member of the Friends of the Wasilla Public Library for twenty-plus years, and it was my pleasure and privilege to be selected for, to serve on several committees when Wasilla decided that it was very overdue to build a new library. I have been friends with friends, members of the Wasilla Public Library, that have since passed away, that had worked for decades to build a new library, some of you may know them. Leroy and Margaret Heaven, Jim and Julie E., Pam Opelander, Jan Lucas, they've all passed away. Coddles, Carters, they all strove mightily for ten, twenty years to build a new library. So, it was my pleasure and privilege when I was asked to be part of the site selection committee, building design committee, capital campaign committee, public presentations to service organizations, businesses, and just the general public, which I think you call the dog or pony show. Because we had to fight with people that said, libraries, nobody uses libraries, and they weren't well? Yes, yes, they do. I was even on the refreshments committee on opening day and gave tours of the new library for the first week. Next to climbing Mount Kilimanjaro in my fifties, that was my proudest accomplishment in my life so far, is being an integral part of building the new library. Mr. Musi was then Borough Manager. He helped with the site selection, he and then Deputy Administrator Burton Coddle, under Wasilla Mayor Burton Reprite, who were able to negotiate with the school district, and we got the land. We were very lucky, we were able to forward fund through our sales tax. And within, I'm a little hazy on the exact, but I'd say within eighteen months and definitely two years, we were able to raise the majority of our money. We had to go begging, hat in hand, to, as I say, service organizations, businesses, both mom and pop, small businesses, national box chains, individuals, we had bake sales, we had book sales. Matter of fact, when the Palmer Library roof collapsed, as a member of the Friends, we do second Saturday reviews, book sales, five dollars a bag. For the first three months, we donated the money that we made to the Friends of the Palmer Library to help you move forward with the new library. I would heartily recommend twenty-four thousand square feet. Build for the future, the library is the nexus of the community, a third place, if you will. And in closing, I will say, a library is a building that provides free and equal access to information for everyone. You do not want to give that up. In a perfect world, you would have built a civic center where you'd have a public safety fire station, city hall, and library. Please move forward on this twenty-four thousand square foot.
That's your time.
Okay.
Frank, Frank Bell?
Hello. My name is Frank Bell, and I just want to talk about some of the arguments that have been presented by those opposed to building a library. The aesthetic design and the unlikely increase it could have on property taxes. And they might be legitimately concerned about those issues, which is fine, but that's not really why they're here. I, I probably don't have to tell you that, because each city won't be here before many, many times. They're here because they're opposed to the library they want removed. They haven't been able to do that within the parent system. And now they're trying to punish the librarians by handypacking the library itself. And they want you to help them do it by slashing the budget for this building. I'm gonna read you a few quotes from the members of this group, taken from some recent meetings, all of which are about the way they're all. Quote, "Our librarians are pushing child grooming. The more we see from them, the more they show us what pedophiles they are." Quote, "I want to see the librarians that allow this garbage tried, convicted, and thrown in jail." And they have tried to do that, by the way. Quote, "We built these beautiful multimillion-dollar buildings, and we put Marxist librarians and teachers in them. We need to close these institutions down." Quote, "Let's talk about ways we can defund the librarians. Legislation has a part to play in that, too. Just this week, Palmer voted to give several million dollars to the new library. We need to fight that." And this last quote is in reference to the last city council meeting in this very chamber. Quote, "It was a very sad situation. The liberal retards built the chamber. They want to build a castle for their empire of indoctrination centers." Now, to be clear, they have every right to make their voice heard when it comes to content. What they do not have the right to do, in my opinion, is to take their anger out on the vast majority of people and families who use our library for its intended purposes by punitively stripping them of the resource they deserve in a tragically misguided attempt to punish the librarians. These are two separate issues. If you disagree with fluoride in water, you don't drain half the resin water. If you disagree with abortion laws or vaccines, you don't defund the hospital. And if you don't like books with LGBT content or sexual education, you don't defund the entire library. So, please, I implore you not to cave to allow an angry minority that is testifying here out of hatred for our librarians, but to rather listen to the overwhelming majority of voters who voted to fund this project as designed. And to the people here testifying out of love for libraries and love for their community that at the last meeting represented a majority of these teens of three. It is my sincere hope that the members of this council also have enough love for this community in your hearts and enough courage to listen to the abundantly clear voice of the people you represent and build the appropriately sized library as it's currently designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, go for it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Jackie Gelfly. Slanders aside, I would like to bring your attention to the fact that I love librarians, I write books. I've loved librarians since I got my library card in 1993. There is a problem with this library, and the problem is the fact that there's a lot of civic space in there that the library didn't contain before, and there, it will need to be heated and cooled and taken care of. It also takes away from the business owners that would have business, that lose their business because they have their restaurants that where these meetings used to be held, they would no longer be held there. The whole situation has nothing to do with the fact that there are books in there that are a problem. That's a totally different situation. This library, have you ever been on the side of the mountainous Kukrata Indian where you can't see the mountains? If you live over there, you lost your view. If you put up a two-story building, everybody downtown, including the tourists, will, in that section, will lose their view. They will see a big building that's made out of lights. Twenty thousand square feet, if that's the size you want to make it, can be designed differently, bi-level, tri-level something, so that it doesn't change the skyline so significantly. Remember, Washington DC, I've mentioned this before, when they wanted to put a two- or three-story building on the Fox River Park? So, Washington DC has a skyline law. You can't build anything above a certain height, so the Washington monuments stand out. And if you build anything that large, you're gonna lose the skyline of Palmer, you're gonna lose the small-town feel. If that's what we want, is a greatly huge library, and we want to have all of the money spent to, to heat it and cool it, the carbon footprint, okay. But let's please try and design something that doesn't affect the skyline with something that's a big square. It doesn't look like Palmer, remember Alaska at its best? So, I thank you for looking at this again and for deciding what you want. And it has nothing, absolutely nothing to do with the books that are in there. Thank you so much for listening to us, thank you.
Thank you. Dave Rector?
Hey, y'all, how's it going? Good to see you.
Please, please start with your name.
Sorry, I got that far, okay, here we go. Last time we spoke was regarding the approval of the new library. Among that sport, we also heard measured and respectful counterpoints from y'all and some folks behind me, no big deal. Today, I would like to share my thoughts regarding a few of those points that I heard two weeks ago. I'm not a pastor, but I'm a sucker for a three-point sermon, just as much as the next guy. So, one, we heard a lot about keeping certain content out of our libraries, it makes sense. My encouragement is to please keep those two issues separate moving forward. When you talk about content in the library and the approval of the plan, you can't ban books from a library that doesn't exist in the first place. However, my two cents is that public libraries are intended to keep the largest volume of known material to the general public. If there is concern from parents about the genre of books that kids can access at the libraries, then this is an opportunity to do just that, be parents, and coach their kids towards the type of content that they would prefer them to consume. Don't just expect the government to ban something from the public because you don't like it, you think it's evil, or it challenges your own beliefs. Number two, I, I feel like we heard a lot regarding the role of non-government NGOs in the current programming and advocacy for funding of the new library. Personally, in working for almost twenty years as a, in a career in natural resource management, I learned that cross-sector partnerships is imperative in making anything work whenever it comes to implementing government funding. And I think that you all know that, too. In this situation, I think it's important that both us, the NGO side and y'all, realize the inherent necessity of the role there, and then move forward with some sort of plan. I recognize that fiscal conservatism is a val, is a value to our, to our community and to this council. And in the time since the collapse of the building, I've seen NGOs pick up, pick up the slack what government hasn't been able to provide due to just the nature of living. So, I ask, wouldn't nonprofits stepping up to the plate in this moment and moving forward just be a good thing? Right? And then the third, the funding itself. I recognize that there's concern that if we used all ten million of that bond, that it would encroach our ability to, like, pay for other government, government services, and that makes total sense to me. But if that were the case, then why did the ballot measure move forward in the first place? This seems pretty silly, like, we stepped up to the plate, we said that we were able, we were willing to do this. It almost feels like the ballot measure moved forward with the thought that the public, there was no way that they would vote for this. But we did. So, it would be our fault that if, if, if it didn't get voted for, I don't understand. So...
That's your time.
Thank you for what you do, and we'll talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you. Lois, is it leaving? I don't know if I'm saying that right. I don't know if I'm saying that right.
My name is Lois Leving. So, uh, good evening. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of the library. Um, I'm a retired teacher, a literature school teacher, so I, I did a lot of stuff with children's books over the years, and I also, um, my husband agrees to children, now adults, all avid readers. Um, I am here is for the library because libraries are for everyone. They're truly community spaces. People come to the library for many reasons. They come for information about everything we can imagine, people, places, current events, historical events, religion, science, everything. They come for tax forms, they come for internet access that they might not have at their homes. They, of course, come also for books, um, some for information, some for recreation. A good book and a comfortable, quiet place to read it is a wonderful thing. A good library can be a really restorative place in a hectic world. Parents bring their children to libraries to experience the magic and power of great books and stories. They learn this at storytime, or when they check a book out and take it home and read it over and over again at bedtime. Um, they bring their children to sort of reading programs. My own children were very involved in those, and then they were volunteered in, um, that's in junior high age, volunteers later. Um, our library, when we had one, also had team nights where kids would read a book and come and talk about it afterwards, or watch a related movie, have popcorn. It was a way to expand those literary activities into a social setting. We know that young children who are exposed to reading from babyhood are more ready to learn when they start school. I've seen this over and over again in my experience teaching. We know that children who learn to love books and reading are more successful in every avenue and area of their schooling, and this opens up opportunities for them for the rest of their lives. It also enables them to be informed and involve members of our community and our world. Quality accessible public libraries are a part of creating this cycle. And I would just throw in at the same time that good librarians are also a part of that. An expansive library that is welcoming to everyone and showcases reading and knowledge in a beautiful, in a beautiful and comfortable setting can be a tool for our community. It can be a place for lectures, art things, music things, community meetings, debates, discussions, and, of course, books. Hopefully, we will find a way to, um, do what the voters voted for and provide this library that will enable us to have what we have in our other library and things that we hadn't even thought of yet, and twenty years from now, we might want our library to be a part of. It will be a true multi-space for the benefit and enjoyment of the entire community across all ages and economic strata. One of the things with the public library just for kids is that it provides free books in the summer when you don't have school.
That, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Evans?
My name is Kim Evans. Um, I've lived in Alaska for more than fifty years, most of my life. Lived in the valley for more than thirty years. I'm here to talk tonight about the Palmer Public Library. Hi, friends. The city of Palmer voters did overwhelmingly vote for the library plans as presented by Wolf Architecture, um, to the tune of ten million dollars. The state of Alaska approved appropriate five million dollars, and the Friends of the Palmer Library, Palmer Public Library, have been working very hard to raise money as fast as we can. Wolf Architecture determined that the most cost-effective use of the money was not using any old building, um, and making it maybe somewhat less attractive for a two-story building. Um, if we're trying to save money, why would we go back and ask them to redesign, to make it smaller, um, to make it more attractive? Um, they're trying to do the best they can with the money that was, um, totally inappropriate. Um, libraries have so much more to offer than just that space, which is community space, of course, but, uh, libraries, of course, books are important, um, all of the other things that you don't necessarily think about. The, the current building has no room to take students in for visits. Um, I know many people who no longer go there. I personally have friends in the audience right now who no longer use the public library, instead they go to Wasilla. And when they're there, they'll spend a night. I have friends at work who told me that they used to come from Wasilla to Palmer to go to that library, and then they'd go shopping at Futter Side, and they'd buy food as well. So they become too former specifically because of the new library. Um, people can't access that library anymore except for the most middle. So a lot of people are not coming to Palmer. I strongly urge you to go for at least the twenty thousand that's been approved so far, with lots and lots of meetings come off of Wolf Architecture, um, with a lot of public input. So if someone had a problem with the design, they could just go to that, um, Wolf Architecture, listen carefully, is what I saw. But, um, I urge you to go with that twenty thousand dollar, that twenty thousand square foot. And thank you for listening today.
Thank you. Travis, is it Freezen? Is that how you say your last name?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not working. Well, I'm gonna now project myself louder. I'm Travis Freezen, I live in, I live... What is it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't, don't beat it up too bad.
I won't. Anyway, I'm Travis Freezen, I live in Palmer. I've, recently, I've been passing out recycling pamphlets around the neighborhood so that people can be more aware of the recycling center, and last meeting, I've contacted, um, the two, those, the two lads over there about, um, getting, getting more recycling in the valley, especially and particularly, uh, busin, to businesses. But there's some legal, um, issues that need to be accounted for, and I've also run into another problem. I've, I've realized, when I went, if you, I, I remember one time I gave you the pamphlets, and if you look in them, they'll, they'll list all the transfer sites. So, and I noticed that there's a lot of communities that don't have transfer sites, and, and I think that Pa, that Palmer and the greater Palmer area would benefit from such, uh, transfer sites so that people would be more aware of recycling. So if you guys have any ideas, um, to help me with my agenda, I would like to, I'd like to get your input because I'm trying to get somewhere, and it seems that I try to go one step forward and two steps backwards, you know? So I don't like to be defeated in such, such a way. All right, thank, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Susan, how do you say your last name?
Pauder.
Pauder.
Yeah, my husband said it in English. Hi, I'm Susan Pauder, and I, um, I came to speak in, uh, in support of the Palmer Public Library and building the biggest library possible. Um, if you had been to the library before the roof collapsed, you would have noticed that it was always full. There were, there was never an empty table. Uh, you had to wait for a computer. It was small. It did not meet the needs then, and rebuilding the same thing is not even gonna start to meet the needs now. Um, Palmer, there's always been a, uh, need for space in Palmer to meet and to, um, have meetings, to, uh, to have come scout meetings, to have girl scout meetings, to have meetings other places, and there is just no place to do that in Palmer. Um, people now, like, oh, do you think we could use, you know, the extra room at Turkey Red? Oh, do you think, you know, MTA, you can't go there anymore? I, I think there's no place to meet. You need to build someplace for your community to meet, or you will be losing your community. When I come out of the road I live on, I have a choice between turning to Wasilla or turning to Palmer. I have always turned to Palmer because Palmer had the best library. It's where my kids were raised. If you do not build a big enough facility, you're going to lose those people who have the choice of turning to Palmer or turning to Wasilla. When I come to Palmer, I don't come to Palmer and just run to the library and leave. I come to Palmer, I check out my books, I go grocery shopping, I go downtown to non-essentials. Heck, I even buy my clothes in Palmer. I mean, really, if I choose to go to Wasilla, you're losing that community part. Have you talked with the chamber? What is the chamber thing? Do they think it's, you know, great to build a teeny-tiny library that our community's already outgrown? Once you approve a bigger building, um, the Friends of the Library as a nonprofit can work with the city and begin to pursue grants. We can't pursue a grant when we don't even know what we're getting. Once you guys approve something and move forward, we can start working on pursuing grants. Sitting on this any longer is not serving the needs of the public. The public has voted for a new library, and we're still waiting. It's been more than a year. Come on, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Karen, is it Louis? Your signature's, sorry. And, and this will bring us up to our thirty-minute limit, and then we'll have another audience participation towards the end of the meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Karen Lewis. Um, as far as the li, as the library goes, if we can do a larger library, great. If we can't, then we can't. That's up to you to decide. But big would be great, lovely. The only thing I have a problem with is the obscene books in there, and we should not have obscene books in our libraries, and not the new one, not the old ones, and we're working very diligently to get those out of there, and I believe we will succeed. The, we've tried very hard, we challenged a lot of books, and the problem is, when we challenge these books, the people on the library committee take the, as a whole, as the whole book, and it's not. Um, it's the sexual portion. That's what they're supposed to be judging, whether it's obscene or not, not, not the rest of the book. So, um, Justice Brennan, uh, he was, um, a U.S. Supreme Court Justice, he stated that sex and obscenity are not synonymous, and we all know this. Obscene material is material that deals with sex in a manner appealing to prurient interest. And then he compares it to the portrayal of sex example in art, or in literature, or in scientific works. It is not sufficient reason to deny material the constitutional protection of freedom of speech and press. It is therefore vital that the standards for judging obscenity safeguard the protection of freedom of speech and press for material that does not treat sex in a manner appealing to prurient interest. So right here, he just, he shows you, you know, you're, you're looking at the sexual part. Uh, I downloaded the most recent Citizens Guide to U.S. Federal Law on Obscenity, and it says, "In addition, Section fourteen six six A of Title eighteen United States Code makes it illegal for any person to knowingly produce, distribute, receive, or possess with intent to transfer or distribute visual representations such as drawings, cartoons, or paintings that appear to depict minors engaged in sexually explicit conduct and are deemed, they're deemed obscene." This statute offers an alternative two-prong test for obscenity with a lower threshold than the Miller, Miller test. The matter involving minors can be deemed obscene if one depicts an image that is, or appears to be a minor engaged in graphic bestiality, sadistic or masochistic abuse, or sexual intercourse. And number two, if the image, we're talking about the image, the cartoon or whatever it is, lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. Now, that is the third part of the Miller test, and, and, and everybody who's, all the committee members are going to the other parts of the book that don't have the obscenity. Oh, this is good, this is a good part here. It's ver, it teaches them lessons and whatever. That's not what they're supposed to be judging. They're supposed to judge the sexual portion of these books, and if they did that, those books would be gone because they are obscene. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll close this audience participation. As I said, we've got another audience participation, and we'll put this back out somewhere. Uh, next we have public hearings. So, Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-one-seven authorizing the city manager to accept volunteer fire assistance grant funds awarded by the State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry, and appropriate the funds to the City of Palmer Fire and Rescue in the amount of seven thousand dollars to purchase wildland fire gear. So we'll open the public hearing. If you wish to speak to this, uh, specific resolution about the purchase of wildland fire gear, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you approve?
Second.
Okay. Move, seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Alchantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Anzalotti?
Yes.
Councilmember Moline?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
unanimous?
Unanimous. Okay, next is Resolution number twenty-four dash zero-one-nine. Appropriate funds in the amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-one cents from the unassigned net position of the Water and Sewer Fund to purchase a new Case three-two-one-F compact wheel loader and attachments from Yukon Equipment, Inc. Uh, we will open the public hearing for this Resolution twenty-four dash zero-one-nine. Anyone wishing to speak to this item can come forward and do so. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Moved and seconded. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilman Cooper?
Yes, sir, thanks. I, I just wonder, you know, I, as I read this, I'm just wondering, what, what is the actual use of this in, and, uh, for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, when it talks about accessing tight areas of the wastewater treatment plant, it seems like a little excessive, but if you would please explain that to me.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, I am very pleased to call forward Mr. Greg Wickham to address these concerns.
Thanks, Greg.
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, this three-two-one-F that, um, we want to purchase for the sewer treatment plant, one is gonna be utilized for snow removal for out there. Two, we have, um, Univar delivers these super containers, five-hundred gallons of chemicals that we now need for the new treatment plant. Um, this will be utilized to obviously offload, put it in the building, take the empty off, load it onto the truck, um, numerous things, you know, moving lime around to the headworks building and stuff like that. Um, yeah, it's got a lot of uses.
Councilman Cooper, follow up?
Follow up, please. Uh, it talks about supporting the maintenance of fire hydrants. What actually are we gonna be doing?
There is an attachment that we have, Public Works currently has a three-two-one-F. That's why we specified this one. We're utilizing it now, obviously, to street, sweep streets. Uh, we had to stop that, disconnect everything, go to the Univar truck, unload all the stuff, come back, reconnect. Um, there, they have just received a brand-new hydrant cleaner, which sets over the top of the hydrant, scours it up and down in a matter of a minute and a half, and they can repaint them. We tried it out with ours as a test, it worked good, so, and they just, they had just received that.
So, so Public Works has a three-two-one-F at this point?
We have one right now, but it's currently trying to do double duty everywhere.
So is it used to, uh, help with... So is it used to, uh, help with snow removal during, in the city, or?
Ours is used to help snow removal in the city. We unloaded calcium chloride this week, we've unloaded, uh, chlorine this week, we've unloaded caustic soda for the wastewater plant, plus we're sweeping approaches and roads.
Do we, do we need a, a special operator to run that?
No, it's, it's a small compact unit, and in the wintertime, Tracy, um, our grounds foreman is on it a lot, so...
Okay, thank you.
It's much smaller than our big loaders.
Deputy Mayor Anzalotti?
I think my question might have been answered. I just saw on, um, page twenty of the agenda, the third whereas, that we have a current wheel loader, and I just wondered if that was just going to be continued to be used, or if we were going to move that on or sell it or something, so...
It, it just, it's difficult to stop an operation to run all the way out to the wastewater plant, because it puts a lot of wear and tear on it. It would be nicer if they had their own, so we didn't have to drive the two or three miles out there to unload their containers and load them up. That's, that's what we're moving forward to, plus it's an enterprise fund, so...
Councilman Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wickham, thanks for being here. Um, just on page twenty-three, on the quote itself, and I know you don't have it in front of you, but it talked about the loader total being a hundred and seventeen thousand, and then they have a total attachments of sixty-six thousand. I assume that number must be twenty-two, because the total loader and attachments and the amount in, in the, uh, legislation here is one thirty-nine, so...
Yeah, there is some source, well, discounts, and I just looked at the final quote, I turned it into my director, but...
Yeah, but if you had one seventy, then that, so, okay, uh, but one thirty-nine, nine forty-nine, forty-one is the amount for this.
I, I am understanding that is the correct amount.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could... Mr. Best, you still with us?
I am.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing a question from you. If you don't have any questions, we'll go call the roll.
Councilmember Moline?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Anzalotti?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, next we have Action Memorandum number twenty-four dash zero one eight authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with H5 Construction in the amount of two million, fourteen thousand, three hundred and four dollars and thirty-eight cents for the Bogart Road Booster Station. Uh, what's the wishes of the council?
Moved to approve?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Um, do we have any questions or clarifications from staff, or? Councilman Tudor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious, it looks like there's some history behind this. I saw that it was originally given to another organization, and then there was kind of rebuttal from, um, H5. I was curious to see what, kind of what happened there, if we could explain it.
Mr. Pussey?
Um, yes, and thanks for asking. First off, these funds are coming from Matsu Borough. This was a, a project they worked on, and, um, they've given the entire cost of this to the City of Palmer. So this will not affect, um, our taxpayers, um, or our utility. So what happened is we had, I believe it was five, was it five bids? We had five bids. We had, after we opened the bids up, we had an apparent low bidder. Um, the low bidder, after reviewing the bids, was, um, was not fully complete, they did not meet the obligations to bid. Um, there was, there was actually a protest, because that did occur. Um, it was reviewed. Our attorney was involved in that and found out the second lowest bid was the, the first bid that met all the requirements. And so that's why, um, we ended up with, with H5. There was not a significant difference between the price of the non-proper bid and the proper bid. Um, but it kept right within our, our rules, regulations, and documentation, um, and we did go through, um, an appeal process, followed our own code, it worked very well, um, this time, and, um, I'm very pleased that we're able to do this today, as opposed to do it six months from now, because of a complaint after complaint after complaint. Um, our attorney and Public Works Director and crew did, I think, a very good job working through this issue to get us where we are today.
Okay. Councilwoman Moline?
No, I'm good, that answered my questions, thank you.
Councilman Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Manager, um, once we get this water line done out to the Colony High School, is the, uh, the borough or the school district going to be paying for water? Are we going to be getting money from them?
Um, yes, yes, we, we charge for our water, yes.
And, and is that include, it seems that they're outside the city, does that include that extra three percent as well?
Um, no, it's, it's the standard, what we charge for all people outside the city boundaries, which happens to be slightly higher than what the citizens pay. We don't, we don't add three percent to those folks. They pay what the going rate is outside the city.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilman Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Manager, I think this is going to be, uh, you know, all's well that ends well type of situation, but, uh, kind of piggybacking on what Councilman Tudor was asking, I mean, we have a consultant, HDL, that, uh, that wrote a letter and said that, you know, the Orion bid was okay. Fortunately for us, the difference between H5's bid and Orion's bid is pretty minuscule, but, uh, had H5 not been there, the difference between the third-place bid is rather substantial. And I'm just curious why it got as far as it did before someone realized it was a non-responsive bid to begin with, and someone, I, you know, I'm looking around, but I, I think HDL, if they're our consultant, they would have recognized early on that, uh, a bid was non-responsive, and we wouldn't have gone through this, this procedure. Am I missing something?
Um, no, sir, that is an astute comment, and there have been discussions regarding
Okay. Councilwoman Moline?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, when you say there have been conversations about that, has there been remediation plans put in place to avoid that in the future? Can I jump in?
Mr. Managers?
Yes.
The attorney, okay.
So, uh, HDL helped put together the bid initial documents to put forward on it, and when we received the five bids, they're all opened, and please interrupt me, but they're all interopened all at once, and then it's just based on the monetary amount, this appears to be the initial bid. There was a process requirement, according to the city process, within two days. So it was, um, uh, immediately evaluated within the forty-eight hours to be that there was a portion of the requirement, specifically the subcontractors, that were not, um, submitted in timely manner. And that was the, the issue put forth with the documents. And so then, the second individual put forth the bid, looked at the process, and, um, and then we immediately approached HDL regarding any, if there was any confusing document, um, issues within the bid, then they are addressing that in the future. But it was pretty clear regarding associated timelines and the requirements for all the bid documents.
Okay, follow-up, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, people, people have been mentioned a couple times, five bids, the letter only mentions four. Is there another one that got tossed out even before the letter was written?
No.
No?
I, I was in error. It's, if it says four, it's four.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to vote, then? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Anzalotti?
Yes.
Councilmember Moline?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay. There's no unfinished business. Uh, now we have new business, uh, request to direct the city manager to get an estimate from Wolf Architecture to provide architectural drawings of a new library building with building costs being no more than ten million dollars and utilizing as much of the existing design elements as possible that was based on public input. Uh, Councilmembers Tudor and Moline, and then we have a note in there if the estimate's available, and I believe we have on our table, we, so we, uh, pestered Gary, so we, we have the quote. So, is there, I know you guys are just seeing us, so is there... Do we need a motion? Yeah, Mr. Ma... So, the motion would be to direct the manager to bring forth a resolution to proceed with the proposal from Wolf Architects, because it's money, so we have to do legislation. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Best?
I, I have a question, and I don't know if it would be like an add-on responsibility to that for the administration, um, but I'm also concerned, uh, or curious, as to the existing plan that we currently have, and whatever plan is presented to us as operational uh, cost that might differentiate between the two. So we, what we haven't seen in the robust twenty thousand square foot model is how many additional employees we might have, um, that would associate a, uh, operational aspect that we haven't taken into consideration, and I would like to see that as well in this new plan that comes forward. So that might be a question for the administration to bring back kind of a thumbnail, um, when the two plans are brought before us. Then we also have, uh, an operational aspect to, to consider when we go forward.
Did you follow that, Mr. Manager?
Um, yes, if it's directed by city council, we will be prepared to do so.
Thank you.
So we still don't have a motion? I read a motion, but nobody moved it.
I wa... I also moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilman Tudor?
Mr. Mayor, I was just hoping to see if we could have a discussion on this as, as a council, and I just want to say thank you to everyone for, for coming out in, in support of the library, and, uh, you know, I, I totally understand where, where everyone's coming from with this. It's, um, there's a lot to this library, and I've heard from a lot of members of the community that they're expecting that the ten million dollar bond was going to be about the price of the library. And, uh, and I, I appreciate so many people that have been fundraising for the library and, and working hard to make this, this a reality. From my perspective, you know, I'm trying to be a fiscal steward of the community. I want to make sure that we're not going to be put in a position later on where city services suffer, because we're trying to, uh, pay for a bond that, you know, in case there's some sort of recession or some sort of economic downturn, the city might be in a bad position. You know, the way I look at it is, is kind of like, you know, when I'm looking for a car, you know, I may have a car in mind that I want to get, but I look around at other, at other cars. I go to different dealerships, look at other cars that are out there, because I just want to see some alternatives. And, you know, my issue with this is that we do have a, a, a great design, but it's one design. And I would, I would like to see some different options, see, you know, what would it look like if we went design A versus design B? So, for me, I think it's a good idea to move forward and, and, and just look and see what this is going to look like for our community, you know, and that maybe that's too small, and maybe that's the right size, but the important thing is that we're able to debate this and look at it and compare differences. And, uh, that's why I think this is so important for us. Thank you.
Councilman Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the, uh, thoughts and efforts, uh, my fellow council member, Mr. Tudor, very, very forward-looking, does a great job, but I, I want to point out what's kind of been pointed out today, is that the library burned down fourteen months ago. Eleven months ago, we got five million dollars from the state through our former mayor and representative Delanda Johnson. We don't, if you don't spend money that's appropriated in a capital budget, they can do re-appropriations of capital budget expenditures. It happens all the time, and Juno spent, uh, now I'm going on forty years, I went to Juno first in nineteen eighty-four. I'm, I was the one who suggested we only ask the citizens for an eight million dollar, uh, amount. I was the only vote for that, and it went up to the ten million. We asked our citizens, they voted overwhelmingly, eighty percent, uh, for that amount. I haven't heard from most folks that say they thought that was a total. We've talked numerous times at council, we have a five million dollar capital grant, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a half to three million dollars coming from insurance. Don't quote me on that, because insurance companies are legendary at lowballing. Uh, so I'll look for the city manager to see if that number's even ballpark of two and a half to three million. And then we have, uh, the credit and good faith of the City of Palmer budget. City of Palmer budget that continues to grow, revenues that continue to grow. I just worry that belabor, belaboring this to look at a smaller thing when we've already asked the citizens and we've already moved forward. I'm, I'm willing to now move forward with this project. I hope that, uh, next time I see Representative Johnson, it'll be like, hey, we try to get more money in a capital budget. We got about five weeks left in the legislative session. Uh, I don't want to leave it at a spot where, well, you guys must not need any extra funding because, uh, we haven't even done anything with the initial five million. So, with all respect to my colleague, who I think does a fantastic job, I don't want to see this thing move forward. Thank you.
Councilman Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. To remind the council, back in, uh, last year, there was an ordinance that was passed to go before the voters for ten million dollars. In that ordinance was an amount that they thought that the, um, budget would not be sixteen, about sixteen million for the library. So that was, that was already out, put out there. The citizens know that, you know, that they're responsible for the ten million dollars, or the city's responsible for ten million dollars, and they overwhelmingly supported it. And they also knew that we were talking about sixteen million dollars for the library. So that was, you know, well within their thought process. Um, you know, we are the fastest-growing area in the state, and, you know, currently we have, I don't know, eighty-five, eighty-six hundred, uh, cardholders, I think, in this, in this, in the city. Um, and we, we, we've, in the, in the new, quote, new library, we've given out sixty-five thousand or so books, I believe, a couple, a few years ago, uh, we were at a hundred and fourteen thousand. I think that we need to increase the size of our library, because obviously, we are putting out a lot, a lot of books in, you know, a lot of spaces. Um, we, we need the large space, uh, and, and to address one of the concerns about the two-story building, the current peak of the, like, current library is two stories already. And so, you know, we're not really doing anything more, um, than just moving it a little bit larger. And if you're concerned about, I mean, I can stand behind my house, I don't see the mountains either. Or you walk out this door, you're not going to see the mountains either. Or the water tower obscures the mountains. I think that's a pretty minor, uh, point, that, you know, all you have to do is move a little bit, and, you know, if you're concerned about, um, the mountains. And, um, if you're concerned about money, and we, we do have the ten million dollars, we have nine million dollars in the bank. Worst-case scenario, we, you know, you, you go into your bank account and you start using that money. Every penny that we get in sales tax yields to three to four million dollars. Another worst-case scenario is you increase sales tax by one penny for a year, you get an additional three to four million dollars into the city coffers. That more than pays for, um, you know, what we're asking for. And, uh, Mr. Alkantra brought up a great point, that the state can take away that five million dollars from us. And my concern is if that happens, then the next time we go back and ask for money for some project, they're going to say, yeah, not a good idea, because you didn't use the money we gave you the first time. We don't think you're going to use the money this time, so we're not going to get it. So I think it just paints a bad picture about Palmer. Um, you know, uh, we, we've heard from numerous people, hundreds of people went to the, went to the public meetings and, and put down what their desires were for the library. Wolf Architecture took all those, took all that information, came up with a design, and, and came up with the square footage of which people wanted. I'm with John, I think we need to move forward. It's been fourteen months, we don't want to wait another, you know, year and a half plus, you know, this, this agreement's going to come up with time. You know, if you read, uh, the agreement for, um, from Wolf, um, what it talks about is it's eleven thousand dollars, but it doesn't include any of the cost estimates for, um, the engineering stuff, the electric work, the plumbing work, the foundation work, lighting, any of that stuff is not included in this bid. And that's just going to increase the cost significantly and increase the time. So I'm with Mr. Alkantra, I think we just need to move, move forward, and move forward quickly, and, uh, you know, go with what the people in Palmer want. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moline?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just going to say it again, uh, as I've said in the past, nobody has said that we don't want a library. It seems to be that there's some miscommunication, and a lot of directives that have come at us with the, um, thought that we don't want a library, and that just simply is not true. Um, we want a library, but we also want to be good stewards and... And we're also the voice of those that don't necessarily come to these meetings, but have a say as well. And a lot of what we've heard is that they don't feel comfortable coming. That's fine. We'll take any directives from anybody, whether it be via email, phone conversation, reaching out to us via text, or even a DM on whatever channel it might be. But those concerns weigh really heavy on you when you hear the public and their concerns about, you know, what has happened in the past. One of the things that was brought up in the past is that, you know, we had a situation with a golf course where we darn near almost depleted our general fund. And that is a scary proposition to me because we ended up with a 1% increase in sales tax. If that was to happen here, if that was even in the realm of possibility to happen here, which, you know, let's face it, we are in an economy that is very concerning right now. We can't afford to lose any businesses in this town because of that. If that was a catalyst to drive people from town, you know, that are our main support mechanism, then let's get real, they're what pay the bills. That would be, that'd be a pretty dramatic, you know, self-inflicted wound, you know, that I'm not willing to take. We want a beautiful library. If we could have all of the wonderful things that, you know, like community rooms and things like that within a library, that would be great. But we don't have an endless budget for this. I feel as though there were decisions made that we were right in making those decisions, going before the people with a bond. We've, that's the right thing to do, to ask the people to vote on whether they want to have a bond on a proposition. Whether it was voted overwhelmingly for or not is you've got people now who are coming back saying, hold the phone. We're really concerned about the amount of money here and what's been proposed. So this is not an easy decision for us, and it's not something that has come lightly. I actually am 100% in support of this, that I think that we need to look at an alternative to weigh it out. I do. So I'm in support of this.
Okay, maybe I will make a comment or two. Palmer, I believe, the citizens of Palmer have always voted for bonds. And I think part of the reason for that is, okay, I'm not supposed to say this in public, but, you know, the government is, we're kind of cheap bastards. And we find a cheaper way to do things. We had significant issues with our sewer plant. And since, I think it was '08, we have spent $30 million on that. But in that, you know, we got grants for over half of it. We actually got a bond passed to help pay for that. We never used the bond. We found some low-interest loans, and so some of it was financed, but not in the bond mechanism. And so in my mind, you know, Palmer will always find the best way to pay for things. So with the library, I mean, we really, I don't know if the manager, we probably don't, can't say much of anything about insurance, other than they're a pain.
We are working diligently. You have asked us and gave us authority to spend some money. Those reports are coming back soon as far as extended damage, so we can press the insurance company to pay the full damages. That should be coming shortly.
Right. You know, we've also been in discussions with, you know, different foundations and nonprofits, and even the feds. I think the manager's been utilizing the website from Rakowski to ask for federal money as well. So to me, this is kind of premature because, one, we don't even really know the full cost of the library because until you get an RFP out, you don't know what it's really going to cost. And then we don't know what's going to come in for other financing. But any other council comments or questions of staff? Or Deputy Mayor? Go ahead, Councilman Best.
Oh, I'll yield to the Deputy Mayor.
She didn't have her light on, I was just picking on her. So go ahead, Mr. Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to say I appreciate everybody's passions. Those in the audience, those that are on Facebook, people that have passions for the library, people that are fiscally conservative and don't want to see us spend too much money. These are the hard questions and passions that are necessary for us to have in these discussions to understand things and to move forward. This is the only way that we, as a community, are able to come together on things. With that being said, on one hand, when you look at the architectural side of the design that is before us, you know, the 20,000-square-foot model, I'm actually a fan of it because I have an architectural background and I can see how it's a flat roof. And it's really like a council member mentioned earlier, that the peak is not any higher than, the flat roof isn't any higher than the peak that we currently have. It's really not going to deter things. When you look at the architectural designs, they look out into the surrounding areas. I think once you're inside that library, if it is to be built, you will actually be able to see more of the community as you're sitting in there and be able to enjoy the outdoors and the indoors at the same time, especially on the second level. I can't think of a better place to be able to watch parades and fireworks in the downtown Palmer area than that proposed balcony area of the library. With that being said, I think this question that we have before us tonight about asking for a smaller design, and then also the augmented questions that I asked for earlier, where we're going to get to see the operational costs, these are the hard questions that are necessary for us to ask and to have the information presented before us and the public all at the same time, so we can all go into these questions and have formulated a much clearer understanding of our future costs and what we're building for our community. So I have no problem with us asking for this second design, spend a little bit of money. It's only, what is it, we have like $12,000-ish. Go ahead and get another set, ask the administration to bring back some more data. And then we go forward as a community with those that are participating in the audience and those that have elected us to represent them, and we can go forward and make a conscious decision. So I appreciate everybody's effort and everybody's passions.
All right. Any other comments from council? Okay. What? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like to go last because I like to listen to whatever else I have to say. But I I don't have a problem with a bigger library. I think that's a fantastic idea. I also grew up going to the library. My little brother still goes to the library with my mom all the time, they love it. And I know it's a big draw and it's a big part of the community. I I don't think a library, or at least our library, is a good place to skimp. It's a place to be careful as far as the budget, for sure. But when it comes to, obviously, the citizens voted for a larger library, and you guys are out here and you're telling us what you want. And, you know, our place is definitely to be careful, and we will continue to be with the city's money. But I also, you know, I hear you guys. And for the most part, it sounds like the bigger library is is what's in demand. And I think it's not a bad idea to look at this schematic redesign. It's not necessarily deciding to go with a smaller design, and I think it's worth looking at. It would only be up to 2,000 square feet larger than the previous library, which that's not a whole lot. I would rather have us look at a redesign that accounts for possibly getting rid of the coffee shop. And I don't like personally the idea of having the council chambers in the library. I don't think that's a good idea. And I think that that would be a better idea to put into the public. I'm sorry, I forget what it's called, but the Help me out. The public
The ready room?
The
Public safety.
Yes, the public safety building, thank you, sorry. I'm sorry, I was just thinking out loud. But those are my thoughts at this point. And I just really want to take what you guys think seriously and what I've had in emails and texts and calls, as well as public input. So thank you guys for your input, and I hope you continue to do so.
Okay, then, are we ready to vote? So the yes vote would direct the manager to bring forth the resolution to proceed with the proposal that we have before us. Madam Clerk, you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
No.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Deputy Mayor Anzalotti?
Yes.
Councilmember Moline?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
No.
Four-three passes.
Okay. So you got that, manager? You have to get legislation before us to spend the money. Okay. Record of items placed on the table. Madam Clerk?
Memo from Gary Wolf.
Okay, the memo. All right, next is more audience participation. And, Mr. Manager, could you grab that for us? Not on the new page, okay.
Thank you.
We'll open this audience participation. And this is Cruz? What's that?
Josh, you go push the button on the bottom.
Oh, Josh, can you make sure that's running? I think it times out. We'll find out. It's still good, okay. So three minutes, please start with your name.
Yeah, okay. So hi, my name is Mike Cruz. I'm a project manager for construction projects throughout the State of Alaska. And I'm coming to talk to you about the library, not necessarily about the size, but about the budget constraints that you have associated with this. So I was listening to a great debate about the architectural contract. My one comment about that is your architect should have designed to a budget, and it should have been in their contract to come back. And if they're over budget, provide recommendations for how to bring the project back in line with the budget. That's standard contract language. And I would recommend you look at their contract to ensure that they have something like that in there. As far as, I heard a couple of people talk about grant funding for this project and how to deal with that kind of a thing. And one item that I would strongly advise is to look at the project and identify what the core program is going to be. For example, if you look at the landscaping of this project, there's going to be lots of trees, there's going to be lots of concrete pavers, driftwood logs, winding pathways that are not necessarily the core competency of a project. And so when I look at a project and I start every project for all my clients at a high level, what is the core program? If it doesn't fit within the core program, you can develop what I call a menu of selections. So you can put items in as ad alternates to your bid to get your core competencies accomplished under your budget. And then you have a menu to choose from to say, what can be incorporated in this project and still meet our budget constraints? And then to the point about the grants and being able to seek grants, you then have actual data that you can take to a grant agency and say, hey, we know how much this is going to cost. If we're able to incorporate this in an ad alternate prior to or during construction, you can get that incorporated into your project at a later date. So just, I sent an email about a week ago going through the Wolf Architecture presentation, and this is kind of what I do for a living. So $10,000 to go through and look at the design, that's not out of line. That is pretty standard from what I've seen, but I would advise to go look at their contract again. So value engineering is what you're looking at doing. How do you get the best value for your money? And incorporate all of the program requirements that have been programmed into this building. The community meeting space looked like a city council chambers. It seems like it's not a core competency. The coffee shop, I have a problem with the coffee shop personally because I like going to Vegabond. I don't want to see competition against them, so close to them. Then, again, there's a massive amount of storage in this building. Is that a core competency? What is the study to say what the legal footage of storage required for a building of this size? There was some reference to the non-government entity space. Again, that is another item. Is it a core competency? Could it be removed or deferred to a later date? There's also an opportunity to kind of reprogram the building and move things around so that you can go through what's called a corn shell. You bring up, you put the exterior up, but you don't finish the building out while you seek additional funding. We do this all the time. We build buildings all the time where three stories above it, they're just going to live as vacant space. You probably see it in movies all the time, where there's buildings that have vacant space. And so I would just go down that route and try to get that menu of selection items.
Thank you. Helen Woodings, we haven't seen you in a couple of weeks. All right, pull that mic close. There you go.
I went to the library today to look at the plan. That's what the newspaper said to do, you're going to vote on the plan and talk to the librarian. And I was extremely impressed that Gary Wolf put out such a plan so rapidly. And everything that, I am totally in favor of what Gary Wolf has done. You told him how much money we had to spend, and he built something with that amount of money. You put that limit on him. Now you're saying, no, you don't want to spend that much. Don't go smaller, go more bare, don't have any frills, no frills, go bare. I would put my money in energy efficiency. I don't know whether that's what this last man meant with value engineering. It sounds like kind of the same thing. But it's very hard to make a building larger later. And I think what we need the very most for this community is meeting space. I liked everything that I saw on their proposed design. I thought the biggest challenge to them was the elevator to go upstairs. When you put the children's, they put the children's room upstairs. That meant stairway or elevator. And so I thought, well, that's a challenge to the librarian and the parent. But if that's what you needed to do to build a building for the amount of money that we gave him, then it was good. So go efficient. I know Harvey Bowers and Kirby Spangler, who have both built energy-efficient houses. And, you know, it might be fewer windows, that's where you lose the energy. I'm not suggesting that, I just say, I don't think we need anything that is beautiful. We need the design and the space, and don't delay it. Start now, we've got the money, we've got the plan, just start and get it fixed. Did I say it all?
Thank you, Helen. Suzanne Hayes.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Hayes, and I wanted to come here tonight earlier.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Hayes, and I wanted to come here tonight earlier and congratulate you on how much you had done to making this community whole again. We lost the roof of the library, we lost the library, and you scrambled, and you came up with an alternative, and it's not good, um, but it's what you had to do. And you went out and you put this to the voters, and they knew how much they were getting in for. They knew you had five million dollars coming from the state. They knew that you were asking for ten million dollars. So, I wanted to come here tonight and congratulate you on all the work you've done. But now, I feel, um, remorseful that you're stalling and that you're going back. And I would have thought that you would have already considered how many employees would be on two floors, how much energy you would be spending. I would have thought that these questions would have already been answered at this point, and you are delaying at this point in time, and this is value that your community is losing out on. Um, for twenty years, I've gone to the library, not only to look at books and magazines, um, the Alaska Collection, but have also attended meetings there. It's a good covered space for the wintertime for groups to get together. Monthly, we've rented the space, the Matsui Burders, and we've come together as a community. Uh, the Matsui Burders come from Willow, from everywhere in the borough, and they spend their money before the meeting, and they spend their money in the community. So, this is, this is money that, uh, your businesses could be making in the city, and they're not making them right now. We're holding the meetings halfway to Wasilla. So, anyways, that's all I have to say.
There's more time left in the audience participation. We don't have anyone else signed up.
Oh, my name is... I clear my throat. My name is Travis. I live in Palmer. Um, one thing I forgot to mention in the other audience part, in the first audience participation is that, um, in the, at the Matsui Recycling Center, uh, they don't ha- they don't have, uh, uh, a, a glass processor, a, a way to process, uh, recycled glass. So, I think we should find a way to raise money so that they can probably, um, recycle glass because the only place I could think of that takes glass is, um, I have to go all the way in Anchorage, which I really don't want to, but I have to, um, and Target because, and even at Target, it's, it's full to the brim. And so, that's, that's on the other recycling part. And, um, on the library, people, some people have complained that, that the, that the library would be too tall, would block the, the surrounding mountains. Well, I have an idea. If, if the lib- if, if the library's too tall, um, you can still have the same floor space, but you can also have it in a basement. A basement doesn't have to be dark. Um, all you have to, you have to, all you need to do is to, is to have it lit up all over the place, you know? It can still brighten it up, it does, and it won't feel like a basement, you know? I know, I've, I've seen some stuff like that before. And also, people talking really, really against a, a coffee shop. And I remember, I remember saying in the beginning that you don't have to put a coffee shop. In fact, you don't have to put any kind of business. You can just simply do, do an art gallery, you know, for, for people in the community to put up their art for exhibition or, or for sale. So, you don't need a, you don't need a coffee shop, and people are already against it, and, and people are really scared about that. So, that's, that's my, um, piece to say, uh, I'd be willing to talk into any of you the, the, about my ideas for the recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's say we've got one man with a hat that hasn't participated yet. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Andre Jackson. One concern I just had came tonight from the city attorney, mentioning about Facebook do's and don'ts. Do's and don'ts. Um, it seemed like you were referring to the council people. If that's the only restriction I would like to add, probably the police department or anybody that's doing business, um, in behalf of the city, whether they're volunteering or whether they're getting paid. Not to exclude the police department for those, um, issues that Facebook posting or social media things, if you can maybe consider that. So, I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Robinson, City of Wasilla resident, and I had an opportunity this afternoon to attend the first Matsui Borough Library Board meeting since the January eighteenth meeting devolved into chaos. And some of the reports, uh, both Palmer and Wasilla reported, and as did the five borough libraries. Since the Palmer roof collapsed, all libraries have seen an increase in circulation and patron usage. Sutton has seen an increase in circulation. Uh, City of Wasilla, my home library, though I patronize, I attend all of the libraries. But last week alone, Wasilla, four out of six operating days, there were five hundred patrons per day. Talk about an economic engine as they spread out through Wasilla and bought gas and groceries and school supplies. In March, there were twenty-two thousand three hundred ninety-seven items circulated. Our twenty-twenty-three summer reading program had two hundred adults and six hundred participants, and we're on track for the twenty-twenty-four summer reading program to have a thousand participants, and that's extrapolated from expressed level of interest. And this is going to sound snarky, and maybe it is. I truly don't mean for it to be snarky. Why I always identify myself as a City of Wasilla resident? Uh, you obviously have no control over Palmer residents, but last night at the City, uh, City of Wasilla Council meeting, several Palmer residents tried to tell Mayor Ledford how to run the library. And if you know Mayor Ledford, that did not go well. So, uh, I always identify myself as a City of Wasilla resident. I mean no, no disrespect. I love libraries. I support libraries. As you can tell by my pin, I speak out against censorship, and I hope that you move forward with building a twenty-four thousand square foot library. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation?
My name is Bill Folsom. I'm not a, I'm not a resident of the, uh, City of Palmer, but I've had forty acres right next to here at West Warden for seventy. I think most of my questions have been answered here, and this one is going to be a little odd, and if you can't answer it now, maybe somebody can get it to me, and you'll probably even wonder why I wouldn't know. Um, the property that's under the current library that collapsed, um, what size is that piece of property? If someone knows, and what is the value do you think of that piece of property by and of itself? All the other questions I've had, I, I'd answered earlier, so, if you can't answer that now, maybe I could get back with somebody.
I'll get back with you.
One other thing, though, I, I think about the people that are concerned about books, and, and I just hope that they're not giving their kids an iPhone or an iPad or a, or a computer because you have to grab the book. Those entities grab the kit, so. I've, um, that's the only question I didn't get answered, what the value is, and I know you're probably wondering why, because I want to know that. Anyway, you got that.
Thank you, Bill. We've got a few more minutes left for audience participation. Our, our code has a thirty-minute limit for audience participation per one, so, which spaces it out, so.
So, I can have three more minutes?
Yes.
Sweet. Thanks. Hi, I'm Dave Rector again. Um, I just had a couple of thoughts related to what y'all were talking about, and I'm on y'all's side. I just wanted to caution y'all a little bit about the language that you're using moving forward in this process. I get, I understand what you voted for or against or whatever. Um, but just my two cents. On the car example, like, I get it, but also, like, if you're a family with one car and a tree falls on your car, you're not going to spend two years shopping for a car. Um, secondly, I get, like, the operational costs and, like, extra hands working the library and everything like that, but that just makes it seem like you're putting the cart, you put the cart before, before the horse with the, um, with the, uh, ballot initiative, and now you're trying to throw the baby out with the bathwater once you realize, like, how much it costs. And then, equating, I feel like it's important that you don't equate the library with the golf course issue because they are fundamentally different in the value that they provide to the public. So, to say, like, this is just going to be the, the golf course all over again, I think that really cheapens the value that the library provides to the public. So, I appreciate what y'all are doing, moving forward with something more than nothing, but just please be careful with the way that you frame your decisions moving forward because we're listening. We really are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation?
You knew I couldn't resist. Um... Mayor, council members, the lads, I really appreciate your vote. Um, uh, I'm, I'm really confused. Do you, do you really think that somehow, all of a sudden, the businesses in Palmer aren't going to be collecting taxes? Do you, do you think the businesses are going to all of a sudden quit working? Uh, you know, maybe if there's a natural disaster, but if there's a natural disaster, we're all going to be worried about some other things, you know? I mean, it, it's, it's just not going to happen. It's not, it's not really in the realm of possibility, so I think it's, um, a little silly to think about that, um, or, you know, be concerned that that's going to happen. Um, as far as com- um, as far as comparing cars, um, when you, when you look at cars, sure, you, you look at cars, but you know fundamentally what you want, right? You've already explained fundamentally what you wanted. Um, he gave you what you wanted, and now you're saying, oh, oh, but let's, let's look some more. And when you buy a car, you don't buy a broken car. What you're proposing here is to look at a broken, a broken plan. We already know it's too small. Everybody knows it's too small. Why are you looking at a broken plan? I'm, I'm just very disappointed, um, that you're choosing to kick this down the road even further and, um, maybe risk losing the money that the state gave you. They're, they're pretty fickle down there in Juneau, and, um, just disappointed.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Uh, yeah, Frank Bell again. Um, I just, you know, I hear a lot of talking, even from council members, about do we need the coffee shop? Um, I don't necessarily like the way this looks. Maybe it's too tall. I think you all realize, and I think you know that most of us all realize, that you are never going to please everybody when it comes to those things. Do I want a coffee shop in there? I, I don't know. Maybe. And I think if you ask most people here that are in support of the larger library, um, how do you feel about the coffee shop? How do you feel about that? How do you feel about this? Most of them are going to say, we don't care about that stuff. Nobody cares really that much if it has a coffee shop, or even a lot of people don't care what it looks like. All this stuff is just wasting time on moving forward with this project. I want, do I want the coffee shop in there personally? Sure, I'd love to get a cup of coffee in the library. But if you told me right now that that was what was stopping you from going forward with building a library that's appropriately sized for this community, I would throw the coffee shop out the window gladly and say, just do it already. It's been too long, or we're going to waste more time and money going out to get another proposal. I think everybody that's in support of the library doesn't really care about those things. We just want to see this thing built, and we want it to be the right size for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Truise Holbert. Um, I don't have anything prepared. I just got off of three days of doing inventory at the bookstore, so, a little tired. But, um, I just wanted to put my word in that, uh, we need a library. We need a bigger library. Um, I was born the year that the old library was built and grew up going to historical society meetings in the meeting room there, and that's one group that has outgrown that meeting room. We, we need more meeting spaces in town. We need a library, and it needs to be big enough. I mean, the town has gotten a lot bigger, just in the time that I can remember. Um, I'm also really worried about the anti-intellectualism streak that I've seen raging in Palmer the last few years that does not fit at all with the town that I knew that I grew up in and that my grandparents grew up in. Um, a library is an investment in our future. It's an investment in the culture and knowledge of this place, and it's essential for students to have a place to study or, uh, for us to have a place to keep our local history archives. I mean, there's so much more that the library does besides checking out books, and the checking out books part is really important, too. A lot of people think that bookstores and libraries are in competition with each other. That is not the case. We, we understand that we each have our very important role to play in society, and, uh, as a business in downtown Palmer, we collect a lot of taxes, and our business model depends on a highly literate public, and a library is very important for that. So, I hope to see a nice, tall library built. I, I know there's been some grumbling about the size, but the quad is where your civic institutions are. I mean, it was laid out in thirty-five to have a nice, big, tall school at one end that's now the Borough Building, and the library is in keeping with that. It fits with that part of town. That's what it's for. Um, so I hope to see a library that we can all be proud of and that will fit our town for the future and that will support the, uh, investment in knowledge and community that we need going forward. Thank you.
Just, just rearrange the chairs, yeah?
Hi, I'm Martine Collins. Uh, my daughter has already spoken, and my grandson has already spoken. Um, the library's been an integral part of our lives. We started out in this library, uh, many years ago, and I know that's been shared by a number of people here. And, uh, I must say that I am disappointed also that we're not moving forward, that the can has just been kicked down the road, and, um, that, you know, the residents have spoken. Uh, Palmer has always been, um, I don't know the best word to use. We've loved Palmer. Uh, we've lived here for forty-five years, and I know some of the people behind me have lived here longer than that, and I, I appreciate the Palmer community, and I just, uh, agree with the, the library being a, a center of, um, space, uh, the heartbeat of the community, really. Um, and I appreciate the fact that we've been able to have a library, and, and I am disappointed that, uh, we're not dealing with this and doing something with it, uh, rather than just kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Someone just burning to testify. We got time for one more.
Hi again. Nice to have the mic working this time. Um, my name again is Kim Evans, and I just want to say, I, I am also very, very disappointed. Um, the City of Palmer voters voted overwhelmingly, almost eighty percent, I believe, is the number, for that bond. The, um, the legislature may very well... The, um, the legislature may very well take that five million back. There's a good chance of that. Um, the overwhelming testimony I heard two weeks ago and tonight was in favor of the larger library, not the smaller library. You're hearing just overwhelming? Please build a better library. So there will always be people who disagree. Um, I'm really sad that you're listening to that very small number of people. Um, and that's all I have to say. I hope that when you finish with that second proposal, that you go with the first one, or maybe, maybe it's something different, but at least much larger than twelve thousand. It's inadequate. Um, the valley has grown from, when we moved here about thirty years ago, I think it was around thirty thousand people in the borough, and it's now, I believe, over a hundred and ten thousand. Um, the Palmer Storytime for little children, please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was around thirty babies attending Storytime, and, like, seventy-plus toddlers attending Storytime in the Palmer Depot. Um, and someone said, well, why don't you split that in two sessions? Well, because what people are doing is going to both sessions, and that's in the Palmer Depot, stand-in for the Palmer Public Library. Um, I see a very big need here, and I hope that, um, after that redesign is, is looked at, that you'll go with a larger size. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, close audience participation. Uh, next is council member comments. Councilman Best, you wanna start us off?
Hi again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Um, again, I, I'd like to say thank you for those who speak with passion. Um, I'm a little disappointed in some of the fear-mongering. Um, uh, if anybody can show me when the last time that, uh, funding for a library was pulled from somebody's, another community's hands, um, I'll eat my hat. Um, the, the fear of money being dragged back out of our fingertips at the moment, because we're gonna take three weeks to do our due diligence as required as fiduciary responsible council members, um, uh, I think is disingenuous at, 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 at the least. Um, we are in a public process. The information that we are receiving, the public is receiving. So the fact that we have not seen information like operational costs is because the public is also not seeing it yet. These are th- questions, and we are just following the process. It's ironic that we have many people that are advocating for libraries, which is giving out information, and yet, because we're asking for information right now, we're being chided for asking the hard questions. Um, so, again, I would ask that they tone down the rhetoric, allow the process to work, allow the elected officials to continue to gather information and to present it to the public in the form that we have before us, and all of us allow the adults, all of us, the voters, the elected officials, and to take a, a long view at the decisions that we have to make. Again, I appreciate everybody's passions, but we need to kinda tone down the rhetoric a little bit. Thank you.
Councilwoman Millie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would echo the fact that we're always grateful that our constituents and the body, which is the people, come before us, whether you're passionate, whether you, you know, throw daggers at us, whatever it might be, that's our role, and I'm happy to hear it regardless. Um, I've always stood on that. I actually am not a proponent of you only getting thirty minutes, just so that you know that. Um, I think that everybody should be heard. Um, that's not a diss against our mayor, that's our code, by the way, so. Um, but, that being said, um, I think that it's really important to call out that when there is disinformation that is being applied within the conversations that come before us. I also think that, um, uh, you know, that it works both ways. Please don't put, uh, um, words in our mouth and accuse us of saying things that we have not said. Um, we care about this community, we care about you, and we care about this process. There are a lot of things here that have been really confusing, um, that are not of your doing, but they're of this body's doing, and then of how the process works, that sometimes happens in a vacuum, sometimes happens in silos. I'm not an advocate of that. I'm all for a public process, but, um, I have also heard from many of you, as well as others in the community, that have felt like this process was already decided. And it wasn't. This is the process. This is how we come to a conclusion. I'm sorry that you're disappointed, but this is how it works. And, um, you know, unfortunately, the fact that you were maybe told or thought that this was already decided upon is really a disservice to you, and it really means that we have probably failed in communication somehow, somewhere. Um, so, we need to be better about that as a body. Um, again, this is, this is not taken lightly, because it's not just you. It's others in the community who are just as passionate about, um, not having a huge library, but having a fiscally sound, um, process here. And, uh, this is not about, I, you know, I don't even care about the coffee shop. I don't care about any of that. I think I've been pretty consistent about the fact that this is about cost to me. This is about the cost and what could happen if we were to default on a bond. Is that a, is that, um, probably a pipe dream? Maybe, um, that it could, but it could happen. Uh, and my role is, is to think about those things. Because, believe me, if, if we did fail at this, and there was such a, you know, something happened, and all of a sudden we had to come back, and guess who you would hold responsible? Us! So we don't take this lightly. This is huge. So, um, I get it, I know you guys are concerned, I know you feel like we're not in your corner, but we really, really are. And, um, I, I'm looking forward to more debate on this as we decide how to move forward.
Councilman Tudor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this could, to kinda echo some of the comments that have already been made. I, I really appreciate everyone for coming out here and, and talking in front of us, and, you know, spending your, your Tuesday evening here with us. I know there's a lot of places you'd probably wanna be, and this is amazing that you're spending it here to make your voice heard. We, it weighs a lot on us when, when you come up here and speak and let us know how you feel. Many of our constituents have been talking to us as well, and, and this is, uh, this isn't a matter of us being, you know, anti-new library building. We all voted to tear down the library and, and put a new one. We want a nice, beautiful building that's gonna serve our community, but we have this duty to make sure the city is fiscally sound, and, and, and have a duty to make sure that we're doing things appropriately and within public process, and we, what we wanna do is make sure that we're not gonna follow the path of many cities that have gone, where they end up in a really bad spot, where they go bankrupt, or just in a fiscally bad spot because they let these expenses build. And we're trying to do things right. We wanna make sure that before we spend, uh, eighteen million dollars, that we're looking at other options and making sure this is the right path for our community. And I think all of us up here would love to have a really large library. We, we would love that. It's just a matter of cost, and we have to make sure that we can justify what we're doing to the tenth degree, and make sure that, that decisions that we're making are the ones that are going to be not just good for, you know, once the building's completed, but will be good for decades to come, because this bond is gonna be here for a long time. We wanna make sure that we can justify this, and, and not only that, but make sure that we don't build this beautiful building and that we can't afford maintenance on it, and it starts getting dilapidated. We wanna make sure that we're able to do things properly. And I, and I understand it's very frustrating, because here we are moving this down further, but for me, it's worth it, because then I can come back and I can say, okay, here we have two designs, we have, we have options on the table for we can go with, and, and I would rather go a little bit slower and make sure that we do this right, and make sure that the path of the city is, is good and clear and transparent to everybody as to why we made the decisions that we did, rather than, than, than do something quickly. So, I, I, I really do appreciate everyone's patience with us. I, I know this is really frustrating, I'm sure, to see, but we're doing this for the best. Um, just, we're doing this to try to make sure that Palmer stays the last of its best. Thank you.
Councilman Alcantara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, echo the comments of the council member to my right. Really appreciate everybody, uh, coming out here and, um, letting us know what you think. Uh, we talked, I talked a little before about just the timelines of things we've gone through. I think rhetoric, rhetoric is trying to suggest to people that, uh, somehow the property ta- the property owners and the renters of the City of Palmer are gonna be stuck holding the bag on this. To me, that's rhetoric. The reality is, we get eighty-five percent plus of our money from sales tax, people who live outside the City of Palmer, and people like me that shop at Palmer Fred Meyer, Palmer Cars, and Downtown Palmer. The reality is, uh, you have to respect the vote. Four council members tonight voted to get more information. Get more information, I'm hopeful, that only takes two weeks, because, uh, I, I read that it could take two and a half to three. We meet again on April twenty-third, we don't meet again after that till May fourteenth. Session is virtually over by then. Uh, I will tell my fellow council member that reappropriation of capital projects happens all the time. The capital budget's been in place since July first, it's about nine months ago. You guys and me, all voted, eighty percent of us, to fund a library back in October. It's now April. I respect the fact that four folks voted to spend the eleven thousand seven hundred dollars and get us more information. That's what we're gonna do. I hope it can turn around quickly enough that we can move forward on April twenty-third and not wait until the legislative session is over and, and, uh, there's gnashing of teeth in the last couple days of session. So, thank you for being here. I wanna say to everybody, I agree with what, uh, my fellow council member said. There's a lot of better things you could be doing on a Tuesday evening, weather's gonna start getting nicer. Don't forget Palmer Cleanup Day on, uh, May eleventh, and actually that whole week, that leads up to it. Uh, let's make our city beautiful, and, uh, I'll be joining you out there, and, um, I really appreciate you all being here tonight. Thanks for the time.
Councilman Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, you know, it's kinda, the, the rhetoric, I guess, is, thanks, everybody, for coming out and, and, and giving us your thoughts. Um, I am truly appreciative of that. You know, I'm just gonna reiterate some of the things I said earlier. We are in the fastest-growing area in the state, and, and we're getting more and more people here that wanna use the library. We're getting more and more, uh, just people in town in general. And, um, and remind the council again that when they passed the ordinance for the ten million dollars, there was a statement in there that they knew it was gonna cost sixteen million for the library. They, that was already known, a known fact, the public already knows that. Um, so, you know, I, I, I have no concern that the city's gonna default on anything. Uh, um, I owned a business in nineteen ninety-six when the taxes went from two to three percent. No business is closed, um, because they just pass it on to the, the folks, and, and, and if you, if we increase the tax by one penny, that would give us another three million dollars. Um, and, and it could be a sunset tax, it could only be for a year, and then we get the money, and then we pay the library off, and then we go back to three percent. Um, so raising taxes doesn't drive businesses away. Uh, the coffee shop in the, you know, I'm, I don't care one way or the other, but the coffee shop in the library is not gonna compete with businesses downtown, because if you're gonna drink coffee at Eggman Blues, you're not gonna go to the coffee, coffee shop in the library, or vice versa. Um, you know, we need to build a building that's gonna last for forty years or so, and we need to be, be proud of the building, it is the center of town. Uh, it needs to be, you know, have pictures taken of it, just like the water tower does. You know, I, I'm really in, in favor of that. Um, so, you know, again, thank you all who, for coming out and, um, giving us your thoughts and, about the larger library. And on a lighter note, Mr. Mousi, um, you mentioned that, uh, the town, we are, we are aging and shrinking, and I think those two things go together. At least I notice it, the older I get, the shorter I get. So, thank you for that comment.
Deputy Mayor Anzalani?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, I was thinking about the car analogy that kept coming up, and, um, I have six siblings, and my parents used to squish us all into a suburban to go to the library, wherever. Um, and, I just, I, you know, it doesn't matter how much money you have sometimes, uh, like, you have to make your family fit, and I think that's, obviously, it's taking the analogy a little far, I mean, we wanna be careful with our money, but, you know, you, your family has to fit. Um, but also, I think it's wise not to buy the first car that you see. I think it's good to look at your options. Um, and I feel like there's a good balance between one that fits your family and one that's a little too big, or has a bunch of things that you don't need. Um, so, I think there were some great points made. I really, really, um, value everybody's thoughts on this, and we don't take it lightly, as everyone before me said. Um, my question is, can we come up with a more cost-effective design and keep space for the best aspects of the library? Um, the ones that are most important, while removing those that don't make sense or might hurt local businesses, because we want to take that into account? And what would the square footage look like after those are taken out? I don't think any of us here, or you guys, want to kick the can down the road. Um, but, we, if you want a large library that has the space that we need, while also using that wisely and our money wisely, and that will last for decades to come, and will be an asset in the long run for our community, I think something that's this important and will last this long is worth a little extra time and thought and discussion and back and forth. So, we appreciate you guys and your patience with this.
I have just a couple comments. Um, I think it was last meeting was the first time we kind of strictly enforced the thirty-minute rule for audience participation, because we had a lot of people, and I think we, uh, I think two people got cut off from everyone getting to speak once that had signed up. Uh, tonight, it, most, there was a lot of people that got to speak twice, but I, I am paying attention to it, and as, as I recognize some issue might be a little more, uh, involved, that will work out ways to either have special meetings, or if I just slide things into public meetings, then there's not thirty, you know, public, public hearing. Anyway, we will adjourn at eight oh six.